Mrs Gandhi, she comes back. She might have learnt her lessons, she might have. So you see what happens, see the Indian economy was also evolving. What you could not do earlier, you could do now. Sixth five-year plan, the lady comes back and decides, till then you had depended upon the trickle-down effect. You remember in 1971 elections, the clarion call was, गरीब हटाओ, गरीब हटाओ, गरीब हटाओ. Don't depend upon trickle-down, somebody will start a factory, that will help a few people, they won't be poor. No, 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 that is trickle-down effect. We have so many people, trickles can't help us. So she said, not trickle-down, sixth-five-year-plan, she said, direct attack on poverty. Set up an industry and for a few people poverty will be abolished, is no longer the strategy of the government. Let growth do whatever it does to abolish poverty, but we have to confront poverty head-on, for which direct attack. And in the sixth-five-year-plan, as you will see in the graphic, all these integrated rural development program, today this program is called National Rural Livelihoods Mission Ajivika. And then you also had National Rural Employment Program, DART plus Rural Landless Employment Guarantee Program. This and this together is what you understand today as Mahatma Gandhi, National Rural Employment Guarantee Program. These two, initially they became J R Y, Jawar Rojgar Yojana, and from there, they have become this. That's the evolution. Because when you implement a scheme, when you design a scheme, implement it, you will learn. Based on that, you know, earlier they were giving loan only to one person. I won't return the loan. But if there is a self-help group, there will be pressure, if you don't give, we'll all be blacklisted and all that. So self-help group, based bank credit became the norm after operationalizing, credit being given to individuals. So you learn. And then there was, you know, today or the other day, our Prime Minister said Vishwa Karma. Training rural youth for self-employment, Tri-Sam it is called. Training rural youth for self-employment. The entire skilled mission, Vishwa Karma, whatever, this. And you have so many schemes for women. Where did they get the trigger from? Development of women and children in rural areas, Dhokra. This was the genesis of empowering women towards self-employment, et cetera. They were all given birth during the sixth-five-year-plan. And what else happened in sixth-five-year-plan? When she came back, she nationalized again, number one, and some political things have happened, I don't want to go into that. So these are the schemes that she took up. Also IMF loan. Again, those guys had raised the petrol price. We were purposely and predominantly dependent on import of petrol. You had to earn foreign currency, you didn't open up the economy. So we needed foreign currency. So where did you go? Private market you can't go because they are like moneylenders. Go to the International Monetary Fund, ask them, sir, we are having difficulty paying for our imports. We also got some loans, sir, we are not able to repay. We need some foreign currency. We are ready to reform, so that we can export and get some FDI. Not right away, in course of time, do please give us, sir, a few one billion, whatever. So that is what she did. In 1981-82, she went to the IMF, took loan from IMF to resolve the balance of payments difficulties. That is, get some foreign currency to do your external operation, paying for your import, servicing your loan and all. That's what we did, 1981-82. And the five, and of course, there is assassination, and the five-year-plan closes. First time, you exceeded 5% rate of growth of economy. How could you do all this? Why didn't you do all this earlier? That's because green revolution, revenues and taxes, India became, you know, the journey to prosperity started. Government's revenues were more comfortable. And with that, government spent on the, you know, directly attacking the vulnerabilities, et cetera. Also remember one thing. If you did not do, Nagzalites were camping in the rural areas. Unless you develop, unless you democratize, you can't take them by the root. Nagzalites were everywhere those days. Today, the Hindu, our home ancestors will stamp them out in two years, et cetera. That's okay, if it is done, everyone will applaud. But the point is, you had to develop people so that they don't fall prey to Nazlism. There was an urgency. And so, all these schemes were taken up. I want the graphic to be displayed. Sixth-five-year-plan. C I M F. All this, all this. This and this, Mahatma Gandhi. This, skilling, women, you know, entrepreneurship and so on. Self-employment, direct assault on poverty. Trickle-down effect. Let growth do what it does. We don't expect growth to all alone lift the country up. We have to augment that, supplement that with. All these schemes aimed at abolition, alleviation of poverty. You got abolish poverty overnight, alleviate, reduce the misery of poverty. So all this, I have told you already three, four times. Another look at this, it's a part of your brain. So let's move on. Yeah. Eighty-five, ninety. Remember she, Mrs Gandhi was assassinated because she was fishing around in politics. Unnecessary politics, self-ruining politics, she did. And she had to pay, you know, with her own life. So dynastic politics, you had eighty-five to ninety, you know, to understand the thrust of the seventh-five-year-plan, you have to understand what's happening in the world. USSR, Gorbachev comes to power, they were questioning communism, they were opening up. China already struck a millennial deal with the Western Japan. Come into my country, I am all for capitalism. So what are you doing with all your government controls, license permit raj? But see, in India, fifties, sixties, seventies and up to eighty-five, fifties, sixties, for thirty-five years, you had orchestrated all this. Government control over the economy, public sector. For you to selectively dismantle that, people have to accept. You can't take people for granted. Today, you tell them socialism, tomorrow you tell them privatization. Expect them to accept you, no. You have to create a, you know, a debate has to be generated and people have to be communicated the need to reorient to the economic model. That took a lot of time, but in the process, the seventh-five-year-plan saw, you know, L T F P. See, the whole thing is, till that time, this is eighty-six, nineteen eighty-six. You know, I want investors. When will I get investors? When they know what is my policy? If I have a policy this year, another policy next year, another policy the year next, there is no consistency. Everything is reversible, arbitrary. You don't like me, so the policy is X. You like somebody else, policy is Y, favoritism, nepot. Have a policy, long-term, tax policy, investment policy, export policy, import policy, public sector policy, rupee policy. So have a policy for a long term because you don't want people to invest five rupees. You want them to invest 500 million rupees. So give them a long-term policy. They will calculate what are the costs and benefits of coming to the country. Ask them, what should we do for? So first time in the history of independent India, there is a long-term fiscal policy where the government expressed, declared its intent to have consistent, predictable, transparent tax policy. Long-term, not annual, long-term. So people are inspired. And then soon after that, in eighty-eight, you know what you had? You had three-year exam policy, export-import. You want me to export? You want me to export? Give me the right policy. I don't know what you're going to do next year and the year next. Two-day subsidy, tomorrow no subsidy, two-day tax concession, tomorrow no. How do I plan? Am I a tourist or an investor? So you want me to invest long-term, you better give me the policy. So three-year exam policy was given. And then, you know, what happened was, there was talk about, public sector requires competition. B H E L, B H E L can dominate the world, O N G C can dominate the world, I O C can dominate the world, if they are made to compete at the right time for right reasons. So public sector reforms. And then the government thought, license permit raj has gone too far and it has suppressed initiative, economic initiative. We need to liberalize, allow the private investment to come within the country. And therefore selectively we'll dismantle this, selectively, gradually, we will dismantle the license permit raj. We'll have licenses, we'll have permits, but it will not be a permit raj, under which bureaucratization, red tape and all. So the initiation of the necessity to reform the economy towards markets, that is what one had seen during the seventh-five-year-plan. Times of India, the Hindu, Hindu of course was opposing all this. Times of India, Economic Times, you know, other papers. Seventh-five-year-plan, that is the historical context. And also that side, I told you what's happening in USSR, perestroika, glass nost, openness, restructuring. And then I told you what happened in China, you know, in China they opened up. This side in the UK, Margaret Thatcher was there. America, you have Ronald Reagan. Both of them were neoliberals and they were saying, give it over to the market, markets can do very well. Why should the government be there at all? You know, there is a slogan, the business of government is not business or something. Slogans, they are all slogans. So slogans were generated to justify government giving over a lot of production function, distribution function to the market. So that was the seventh-five-year-plan. After the seventh-five-year-plan, you had a crisis. You know, political instability. Vishwanath Pratap Singh. After that Chandrasekhar. While they were the symbols of uncertainty, instability in India, within India. Saddam Hussein occupies Kuwait. Oil prices shoot up because of the uncertainty and speculation. We already had a problem servicing our dollar loans. And when oil prices shoot up, it will take us so much more to buy the oil. Our Forex reserves were depleting. Tourists were not coming because of the, you know, geopolitics. So foreign currency earnings were less. The dollar deposits of the NRI's, they will withdraw because after all, if I don't withdraw today, India won't have any foreign currency tomorrow. So that's what is happening in Pakistan right now. I've read a report, report means news report. Where it is said, all your Nestle, these companies operating in Pakistan, they were selling, Nestle was selling. But the profit it made, it wants to convert DART into dollar, Swiss franc and take it home. DART, they are not able to do because Pakistan doesn't have foreign currency. So NRI's who put dollars as deposits because the interest rate was very high, they quickly withdrew because India doesn't have foreign currency. If I don't withdraw now, I'll have nothing to withdraw tomorrow, they start. NRI, out. Tourist, not there. Oil, very high. Forex reserves, dwindling. We hardly had Forex reserves, you know, one fortnight or one month. So this is the reason why the external financial crisis took place. You call that a classical B O P. Very simple. Balance of payments is India, world. So many financial, economic transactions take place. Some get us money, for some we have to pay. For example, I export country, India exports. We get foreign currency. To import, we need foreign currency. If this is less than this, you have to borrow or you have to invite foreign direct investment. With hundred dollars, somebody comes into my country to make steel. Another hundred dollars, foreign portfolio investor. He comes to buy certain financial assets in my country. Most, both of them are welcome. Tourists are welcome, NRI deposits are welcome, exports are welcome. But then I also need to, you know, earn foreign currency in such a way that I'll be able to finance my imports. Imports are about eight-hundred billion dollars, exports are about four-fifty. My people outside the country are sending me dollars, remittances, hundred billion dollar. My service export, you know, net-net, you are short of foreign currency. You are short of it. That is, we are not in a crisis, we got five-eighty-something. Those days, you were not earning foreign currency. Crisis took place, depleted your foreign currency. You could not import and you borrowed from outside. You shouldn't have, but you did. You borrowed from outside, they were asking for interest. You didn't have the foreign currency. Part of the, you know, I don't want to blame Indian government for that. I would rather blame the geopolitics and oil economics and all that. And don't say NRI's were unpatriotic. It's hard-earned money, what is patriotism? So we had a problem, B O P. Balance of payments. Payments means earnings and payments. The sheet, the balance sheet, where you have what you paid to the world, what you earn from the world, that's a balance sheet. And if it's in deficit, you are in problem. You're not always in problem if it's in deficit. America will always have a deficit, but that's America. We had a problem and that was in nineteen ninety and ninety-one. You had no government, you almost had no government. You had two prime ministers. And as if that's bad enough, isn't bad enough. One prime minister got assassinated, ex-prime minister. Prime minister, gone. Another prime minister, gone. Another prime minister, gone. Going, going. And you know, ex-prime minister, he was assassinated, assassinated, blown to pieces, you know. Shatters your mind. So that's what happened. With so many problems, the silver lining was, you know, Pivn Narasimha Rao comes to power, Dr. Singh becomes the Finance Minister and together they have a plan to bail it out. That is called Raw Manmohan model. That was in ninety-one. Very simple neoliberal model. See, whatever you may say, the crux of it is, what are you doing? Opening the economy inside to private sector, outside to foreign investment. Opening the economy for exports and imports. Opening the economy for stock market investments also. And this is what is known as a liberal model. What did Narasimha Rao say? You know, Narasimha Rao said, reliance can make a lot of things. Let them make, why should I make? The money that I have, I'll put up schools. Reliance won't put up a school in rural areas. So I will do public goods and merit goods. And they will do the commercial goods and so on. So there is a separation of responsibility here. Distribution of division of responsibility. That's a classical liberal model, classical. Though you can decorate it in more respectable language, but that's handing it over to the market, why not? China did it, Russia did it and everyone else did it, so you can also do it. So let the markets take over, this and that. So that is Raw Manmohan model, for which a graphic is waiting to be seen. Sixth also, unless we have already seen, we have seen this, yeah, we have seen. Raw Manmohan model. The most, you know, we should have done this in nineteen sixty-five, in which case, we could have beaten China. Twenty-five years we have lost. Twenty-five years we have lost, twenty-five years. So it's not a lost decade, it is the loss of a quarter of a century. Twenty-five years with so many young people, all that. China opened up in eighty-two, we could have opened up in sixty-five. China was doing nothing when we were developing, when Mahalanobis model, all that Nehru's genius was guiding the country. What was Mao doing? Nothing, suspecting people, suppressing people, attacking people, all that nonsense he was doing while we were developing. So you know, we had a huge historical need, but then we predicted it out. So this, we will, you know, the whole of economy is this. We'll be talking of external sector liberalization, we'll be talking of competition, public sector policy, we'll be talking about everything else. Forex reserves, balance of payments, FDI, FWI, all the exports. Each one is a chapter. It's just that in ninety-one, we had a extensive process of opening up, the economic reforms. And this is a snapshot of what is coming, the contents page. This is the contents page, Raw Manmohan model. Anything associated with this, one more? No, okay. So eighth-five-year, I have how much more time left, one hour?
Half an hour.
So we can complete last century, up to two thousand we can go, nineteen ninety. See, so the eighth-five-year-plan. Raw Manmohan model is equal to eighth-five-year-plan. Ninety-two, ninety-seven. And you already have noticed that between ninety and ninety-two, we did not launch a five-year-plan because of the uncertainty, largely globally driven, uncertainty, so annual plan. And you know, Dr. Singh came one year before, but he didn't launch the eighth-five-year-plan. He said, let us understand what's going on, get a grip on what's going on. Let's see what's the solution here. It is, no one is running away. So we'll start the five-year-plan as soon as possible, that was the next year. So you see, what did he do? That was a crisis by any other name. What did he do? You know, you see Dr. Manmohan Singh, you are inspired, you know? Like seeing a good cook in kitchen, full confidence. So Dr. Singh has been given the job of repair. You know, bring the economy back, let's go forward, globalize, catch up with the world and all that. So what did he do? He takes over, that itself is a reform. Having taken over, one of the first things he does, there are two aims here, I want you to know. See, stabilization is what? We needed foreign currency. We had to service some external loans. We had to import certain essentials. And so you got the foreign currency from IMF and you are stable. That doesn't mean you're not going to go into a crisis tomorrow, the day after, the day next. For the time being, you are stable. For example, anyone has a sugar problem, he'll get a chakkar. You know, when you have a chakkar, you take a little bit of sugar. Stabilization. But for you, never ever again to get the chakkar, you have to do some structural reforms. What are they? Regular yoga, pranayama, all that you do. And you will never come back into that. India also, okay, just take this billion, two billion, three billion and sort it out. You are stable, nobody is knocking on your door. Now how do you ensure that the crisis is history and in future you'll never have another crisis like that? How do you ensure? Reform, reform. I had twenty marks out of hundred. You know, that was a shocker. How am I going to never ever again have that? Reform. You know, struggle, after all, nobody has it falling into the lap. Struggle, struggle, struggle. So what's your struggle? So, what's your struggle? Open up the economy, what are you so possessive about your closeness? Open it up. Reliance is ready. When they were not ready, you closed. IDRA, they are ready. Let them come, invest, foreign, all these people. So, when you open, what is the meaning of structural reforms? I remember discussing it in class one, day one itself, when we, you know, understood it as the existing structure of Indian economy is one of insulation, close to the world, no competition, no market forces significantly. So, this is your structure. Reform it, open up to the world, allow the private sector, introduce competition. Gradually, they reserve the public sector, more areas for the private sector, and rupee was you fixing a rate arbitrarily, because, you know, you had to ensure cheap imports, not to inflate your economy. But that's sort of a shortcut you can't have. Go into the market, free up the rupee, run your economy well, ensure that rupee is stable. You cannot fix it and feel that you have achieved the stability. No. Leave it in the market, let it find its value, run your economy well, so that it doesn't go down, ensure it doesn't get too strong either, exports and all that. So, free it up, free it up. And then, the convertibility, that is, for investors, foreign investors, you know, make the rupee convertible, what does it mean making the rupee convertible? Allowing foreign investment at the rupee value at the market rate. Two things, convertibility are two things. Rupee at the market rate, forex, and liberally allow the foreign investor to come into the country at market rate rupee. Earlier, you were saying rupee is sixteen rupees per dollar, they would not come. Neither did you allow them to come, nor did you allow the rupee to have a market value. So, you shut both the doors for the convertibility. Convertibility, as I told you, two dimensions. One, allowing the foreign investor to come into the country, number one. He will do so only if the rupee is freed up and finds a value in the market. So, freedom to come, freedom to go for the foreign investor and for the Indian investor also, at the market rate of the rupee, that's very crucial, market rate of the rupee. Otherwise, your policy won't succeed, because who will come into your country if you are giving forty rupees per dollar? I'm getting my hard-earned dollar. You are saying, take forty rupees, come into my country, invest in my country, all, no. Give me eighty-three rupees, whatever the market says, I will come. Allowing me to come is X. Allowing me to come at the market rate is Y. X and Y together is convertibility. You're free to convert your currency into mine and vice versa at the market rate. For all these purposes, what are the purposes? All these. Invest in my country, make in India, invest in my stock market. Whatever you want to do, you do. And you are allowed to do all that at the market. That is the convertibility, freedom to convert the foreign currency into domestic currency and vice versa for, you know, current account, capital account, that's a separate chapter, let's not get into that. So, Dr. Singh opened up the economy, and that is what he did in ninety-one. And then, when you open up the economy, the model of planning will acquire a new name, indicative planning, indicative. See, what were you doing till nineteen ninety-one? I'm the government, you are the private sector. I was telling you, hundred rupees will go into making steel, eighty rupees I'm putting in, states are putting in ten, ten rupee room is there, you can put in for steel, Tata Steel, Jindal, whatever. So, I'm dictating to you, I'm directing to you, I'm making it imperative for you. I will drive the vehicle, you will ride piggyback on me if I allow you. Now, I'm asking you, hundred rupees may, fifty rupees you bring or fifty-five rupees you bring, my forty-five I'll bring and because my priority is the public goods and not steel and cement. So, come, invest in my country. Oh, Tata, invest, invest, come, invest. I'm indicating, you know, I can't direct you, because I want you to chip in with more than fifty. I'm forty, you are sixty. So, how can I direct you? How can I dictate to you? I can only tell you, see, come, this is my export policy, my import policy, tax policy, largely, you know, there's a multi-policy structure, and then public sector policy, competition policy, these are my policies. I want you to invest in pharmaceuticals. I want you to invest on a strategic basis, fifteen years, twenty years. Why? India has an advantage there, you have all. Are you okay or can I do more for you? Then you will tell me, sir, the tax policy, keep it fixed for ten years, don't tamper with it. Okay. Sir, the labor policy, I want to invest, tomorrow I don't make profit, I want to get out. Allow me the exit policy. Okay? That we can discuss. I won't say, okay. We will see, okay, whatever we can do, we'll do, it will take time, we are a democratic country. So, you and I, private sector in the government will sit down. I have to give you a conducive policy, only then you will invest. Gone are the days when I can twist your arm and get you to work. Look, ninety-one onwards, indicative, whereby the government gives information of the public policy in multiple fields to the prospective investors, and they are consulted, and together they create ambience for, you know, investment and growth. That is the indicative planning model, and that comes into force beginning from the eighth-five-year plan, indicative planning. Eighth-five-year plan onwards. This plan does well, because you've done all this reforms, banking sector reform, stock market reform, lot of these reforms for that. Then comes the ninth-five-year plan, nine, in which, again, you had political uncertainty. Not only a political uncertainty, you know, again, one prime minister, then another prime minister, prime minister changes, another prime minister, and the government collapses and a new government comes into force, and then the prime minister goes, yeah, within one year he goes, kargil happens, and before you wake up from kargil, nine-eleven happens. So, a lot of uncertainty and that, and a lot of things they did. The government did a lot of things. Today, in the Hindu world, did you read? TCS buyback. Who allowed the buyback? Yashwan Sinha, when he was the finance minister, in the government of the NDA, ninety-eight onwards, buyback was allowed. When did Infosys go to NASDAQ to list? That was in nineteen ninety-nine, during this five-year plan. Fifty years of independence, which is, you know, fifty years of the republic. Your IRDP became transformed into Swarnajayanti Gram Swarojgarh Yojana in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, Yashwan Sinha, this plan. Infie goes to NASDAQ, kargil happens, buyback law is made, Swarnajayanti Gram Swarojgarh Yojana, nine-eleven, and then your highway development program, Golden Quadrilateral, National Highway Development Project, Pradhana Mantri Gram Sadaq Yojana, all of them, all of them, tremendous infrastructure. The seat was shown only in the ninth-five-year plan. But then, you know, these policies don't pay back immediately, and therefore, the rate of growth was hardly some five-point-five something. Compared that to this eighth-five-year plan, which grew six-plus, this was five-plus. Then comes a new perception of India as an emerging leading power, global economy. That was tenth-five-year plan, tenth-five-year plan, two thousand two, two thousand seven. As you know, you know, the government changes, but you see, in two thousand two-three, there was a severe drought, rains were not there, agriculture failed, since agriculture has direct and indirect role in the economy, economy fell, this was the drought, and the other day we talked about base effect. So, you fell like this to four-point-two, next year, normal rates, euros. So, this government, which is in power for a while now, they keep saying, we handed over an economy to the other people, the economy was growing at eight point something in the year in which the power shifted. That's wrong. Why? The eight-something was a result of the base effect. If you did not fall, you're counting from this point, you should have counted from there. So, the eight was an exaggeration due to base effect. It did well, six-five-something. So, whatever it is, the tenth-five-year plan, let's see what happened. Tenth-five-year plan, Fiscal Responsibility Budget Management Act comes into the picture. Starts on a drought year, FRPM, Mahatma Gandhi, National Rural Employment, Mahatma Gandhi comes later, National Rural Employment Guarantee Act, Right to Information, Asha, National Rural Health Mission, all these things happen during the tenth-five-year plan. And the world was growing like you can't believe, India also piggybacked. We also grew somewhere around little less than eight percent. Genuine growth, not statistical, you know, makeup, no. Genuine growth, you know, youngsters were happy. World was looking up to India as the next China, genuine growth, infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. And eleventh-five-year plan starts well, you know, seven-two, twelve, starts well. But you had the Lehman Brothers going bankrupt, banks were lending, they were not getting the money back, and they crash, along with the banks, insurance companies, the whole economy crashes, lot of the world also crashes, and so we could not export and stuff, we didn't have foreign direct investment, we didn't have stock market, all that crashed. And so, you had, in this eleventh-five-year plan, you started out, seven-eight was good, eight-nine Lehman Brothers. After that, of course, you did the standard keen-shin stuff, borrow and spend, the question also came in the exam, stimulus. And incidentally, the eleventh-five-year plan did well. If you look up the textbook, you will notice that during the eleventh-five-year plan, we grew past eight percent. That was the eleventh-five-year plan, because we spent a lot of money, expenditure GDP. And then twelfth-five-year plan, first time in twelfth-five-year plan, on the cover page of the five-year plan, you had the target of sustainable, inclusive, more, faster, more inclusive, sustainable, you know, economy, growth, sustainability. And then the government changes, two thousand fourteen, they didn't like all the Soviet-style planning, so they abolished the Planning Commission, replace it with Neeti Ayog, and so on and so forth. So, you will see some more graphics now. Neeti, not yet, I have not discussed. This we have done, this also we have done, Raw and all that. Sixth, we have done. So, Neeti Ayog, I want to discuss separately. I have some time left for Neeti Ayog?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay, okay. So, you know, what is Neeti Ayog? Replace this Planning Commission. Planning Commission, you know, it wasn't a constitutional body, it's not set up by an act of the parliament. Cabinet met, union cabinet, decided, let's float a Planning Commission, so you float it. Similarly, Neeti Ayog also, not constitutional, not statutory, decision of the cabinet. See, you know very well, we had a discussion, Planning Commission, NDC. They are two separate bodies. Though Planning Commission is a part of the NDC, NDC comes and goes, Planning Commission stays, is a permanent standing body. And what did the government in two thousand fifteen decide? Let's scrap this. NDC, they have not touched, whether it's there or not, we don't know, they have not abolished it. Even NDC was set up by a decision of the union cabinet, not constitutional, not statutory. They have created a Neeti Ayog, this is Neeti Ayog, in which, this is a standing body, the think-tank, what they call organizational framework, the hub, and this is the governing council, where the prime minister, the prime minister is here. Prime minister heads the entire Neeti Ayog, in which there is a hub, think-tank, and governing council. Governing council is entirely political. So, this is the governing council, and this is the think-tank. Call it office, call it organizational framework, call it whatever, this is the think-tank. Governing council is political, prime minister, cabinet ministers, special inviting ministers, chief ministers, LG, administrators, all of them. Prime minister heads both. This is headed by vice-chairman, not deputy chairperson. Planning Commission was headed by PM, and next is deputy chairperson, here vice-chairperson. And then you got some permanent members, you got part-time members. Part-time members are who? Let us say, you are a research director, Indian Agriculture Research Institute, you will be asked, you be a part-time member agriculture, somebody, council medical research head. Part-time member, experts, they are all here. It's an ongoing body. This meets, no frequency specified, they meet, last year they met, the seventh meeting of the governing council. So, what do you do? Why did you scrap the Planning Commission, replace it with Neeti Ayog? Very simple. That was Soviet-style planning, number one. Planning Commission was responsible for centralization, number two. Planning Commission was also allocating money, point number three. States were feeling subordinated, point number four. And we should also, you know this, Neeti Ayog has a provision for, governing council can set up, a regional council can set up, never set up, can set up a regional council. See, Delhi, Punjab, Haryana, UP, Western UP, all of them are burning stubble and polluting this part, set up a regional council, let them address the problem collectively. You can do it, but you never did it. Similarly, water sharing, southern Similarly, water sharing, southern states, let them come together. Zonal councils are there, but they are not entirely planning-oriented. So regional councils can be set up, cooperative federalism can be facilitated. You are a think-tank to advise the government on multiple aspects of development and growth, social development and health, basically cooperative federalism. How do you facilitate cooperative federalism? No allocative function, earlier Planning Commission was saying. Give ten rupees for health. Give, give means give, fifteen for education, ten rupees for empowerment, etc. Now Neeti Ayog has no allocative role. That's done by the, you know, budget and the independently and finance ministry, all that. So no allocative role for the Neeti Ayog. Cooperative federalism, number two. Development-oriented, number three. Not only cooperative federalism, but also to facilitate competitive federalism. How? Take Quality of School Education Index or take aspirational districts or you take aspirational blocks or you take Innovation Index. So what's the game here? Simple. I want, you know, center and states, we can cooperate for development. For example, Pradhana Mantri, Gram Sadaak or, you know, I fund it, I'll implement it and the grams are all states. Or take any other example, stamping out the Nagzalites. I will modernize the police, police is your police. I will give the money, I'll modernize and together we'll ensure there is no extremism. Cooperative, you and I cooperate. Competitive. See, this is the aspirational districts, the progress or innovation index or export preparation index, whatever, many indices, you will see. Where is Gujarat, where is Tamil Nadu, where is Bihar, where is Jharkhand, where is XYZ? See this, compete, beat each other up. This is the index with the help of which you come to know the best practices across the states. Follow those best practices and compete with each other and ensure the development takes place quickly. Compete, you and I compete, you are states and I am center, we compete. You are the states, you compete. Startup policy, let's compete. Old pension, new pension, innovation, let's compete. So competitive federalism is where the units of federalism compete for adoption of best practices in governance and development. Neeti Ayog facilitates it, you will see a list of the indices, wonderful indices. So this is how Neeti Ayog is different, you'll see a graphic also. Dharmaeneji, we have a graphic of comparison also, Planning Commission and Neeti Ayog. You will see two-three graphics now, structure and functions. Seventh meeting as a sample, I have included it in this column because you should know what are the focal areas when the governing council meets. Crop diversification, national education, new education policy, etc., urban governance. You know, if you have these examples at your command, they add value to your answer. Regional councils are not formed, somewhere here it's there, maybe the next graphic. They are not formed, they are allowed, there is room for that, but they are not formed yet. Market-dominated, you want to use the word Soviet, you use, but avoid the word Soviet and all that. You can say Planning Commission centralized. And now that market forces are occupied, playing a larger role, centralized planning becomes more of an impediment than a solution. We have a shorter table on the same, see, Neeti Ayog. Somewhere you will get regional councils, not yet set up. They are all summary of what we have in our own book. Our book is crunched for, you know, quicker grasp and all that. Again, seventh meeting, last year it took place. I don't think it will take place again. The country is too hot now for governing council. The comparison, temporary, of course temporary. If they are set up at all, they have never been set up, so, but the fact remains they are temporary. The comparison, both of them are non-constitutional, both of them are non-statutory. Both of them are set up by a decision of the cabinet. Both of them are involved in economic development, social development. Both of them have NDC participation of center in the states. However, Planning Commission had allocative role. Planning Commission was centralizing. Planning Commission didn't have a facility for regional council. Planning Commission was not facilitating a competitive cooperative federalism. While this does it. You are expected to say, I don't find any difference between Planning Commission and, I don't find any difference except that here you call deputy chairperson, there you call vice chairperson. Everything is same except allocative. Even in allocation, the Planning Commission's recommendations were only advisory, they were not binding. So there is no difference, but examiner expects you to say that there are differences while there are convergences and Neeti scores. And you'll see a lovely deadly graphic after this, the indices, we have them here. Everyone writes cooperative federalism, you write competitive federalism also. See, this is cooperative, this is cooperative, competitive. With the help of indices. You know the Neeti Ayog developmental rankings in all this, they are shown in a delta form. What is delta form? You have eighty percent, I have twenty percent. Next month, from twenty percent, I made it to thirty percent. Delta ranking shows me jumping by fifty percent. You went from eighty to eighty-five. Delta ranking of yours will be five on eighty is nothing, ten on twenty is fifty percent. So delta is incremental, marginal progress. And when that is shown, it's a huge, you know, form of encouragement for those, you know, who are making the leap. This is a set of indices. One graphic captures everything. Rest all is your ability to debate, argue. Multi-dimensional poverty, we'll have an occasion talk of it. School quality, health, composite water management, export preparedness. This used to come up, it's not there. Innovation, of course, is there. Who knows, one or two new indices also may come, you know, while we are preparing, we'll catch up. So that's the deal for today. Tomorrow, we will see what's going on. Day after we are back, fiscal policy, it requires a little more of attention. Fiscal policy, we'll handle that. Get ready with fiscal policy. You know, I requested but my request has been shot down. It seems, it seems you have an exam and also maybe you require some, you know, time to plan out.